Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening. It's Wednesday, November 12th. We apologize for the change of date. Last night was Veterans Day, so we did not want to hold our board meeting on that national holiday. We just came from executive session where we discussed non-union compensation and fire department lieutenant positions. The first item on our agenda tonight is a report presentation of our fiscal year 2024-25 audit.
Drumroll, drumroll, please.
I have a feeling I know where this is going. And if, and for tho- and for those who haven't listened, watched every single meeting, I, just about all of them, I thank Trish and Lawrence for what we're about to hear.
Since Don's never sat to one of these, you should give him some coffee.
Is this part of the minutes? All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Oling. I'm a partner with PKF O'Connor Davies, and I'm joined here to my right by Carolyn Koff, who was the manager who actually did all the work with Trish and Lawrence, you know, this summer, getting this audit where we are today. So, we're just gonna go over some highlights of the audit and then be glad to take any questions you have. So, we prepared a little 10-page PowerPoint summarizing the full financial statements. So, we're gonna start on the first slide, I guess, right? Okay, so, what our responsibilities as regards this annual external audit that we do for the village is to make sure that we're performing it in accordance with what's known as generally accepted auditing standards and making sure that the audit procedures that we're doing, that they are designed in a way that we can assure you, you know, the reader of the financial statement as well, that, you know, these financial statements fairly present what happened here, that they're free of what we call material misstatement. Are we looking at every transaction that the village enters into during the year, every, you know, no, that's not what an audit is. An audit is really like a sampling kind of thing and, and, and doing analysis that way. We would have to provide you in writing if we found any deficiencies in your processes, you know, the, the processes for doing payroll, for paying bills and claims, because if the process is no good, then the numbers that it's gonna produce are, are no good. So, in your case, we're happy to report that we did not find any of those deficiencies and so have none of those to report to you. Our job is also to advise you to make sure, you know, you're following proper accounting policies. There was new accounting rules this year as regards compensated absences, the amounts you owe employees for vacation or, or sick time. And then, of course, we are required, if we found any fraud or illegal acts, to be happening, to report those to you. And I'm happy to report, we did not come across any of those. What you folks are responsible for as regards this audit, as those charged with governance, as we call it, is making sure that the policies, the accounting policies you're using are, are appropriate and, and follow a GAAP and GASB requirements and all those things. You have to present those, these financials in accordance with GAAP, making sure that the internal controls that I just mentioned are, you know, properly operated and that you could trust the information that's going through. Obviously, you have numerous laws and regulations to comply with, federal laws, state laws, local laws, all, all those things. So, we do the audit and making sure the things that are of a financial, legal nature, that, that you're, you're following those. You do have to provide us any financial information that, that we request, so there's no scope limitation on the audit. And then, at the end, Chris, Trish sign a what's called a representation letter that basically spells out that, hey, you gave us everything we asked for, and, and, and so forth. So, we have that letter before we can issue the audit report. And then, lastly, you're responsible for, you know, as the board, communicating with us if you had any concerns, you know, during the year, during audit time, you know, you could always reach out to us. And then, of course, as, as the leaders of, of the village here, setting the proper tone at the top and making sure all those things that I mentioned are in place. So, on the next slide, the important thing here is when you look at the full report, at the very beginning of the audit report, after the table of contents is the auditor's opinion. That's really the only part that belongs to us in that whole document. The rest is really yours. The auditor's opinion can be many things. In your case, it's, it's the best thing it can be. It's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion. And it basically says, we believe your financials fairly present what happened here during the 24-25 fiscal year. We don't do like a full-blown internal control audit, because that, that would really be like a, a different kind of engagement. So, we do it for certain things as relates to payroll, claims payments, and, and certain cash receipts, revenue coming in. So, we do that, you know, within the scope of the audit. These financials and the numbers that we're gonna go over contain a lot of estimates. There's a lot of actual stuff, but some things are, are booked based on, on estimates. And we have to review some of the bigger estimates and make sure that we are okay with those. You also prepare a management discussion and analysis part of the report. That's prepared by you folks and we review it. That will be one of the things that will have some massive changes. Oh, no, for them, it's two years away, right? Yeah, for June, year ends next year. It's, it's for next year. You guys, it, it's two years away. But there are changes that Governmental Accounting Standards Board has made, and it will change how the MDNA looks in, in the future. We didn't run into any difficulties. We didn't have any disagreements with these folks. And so, you know, we believe our, our independence to do this audit, you know, has not been impaired. So, that's good. So, with that, I'm gonna have Carolyn take you through the next page, which is the page of your numbers for your general fund and how you did from a revenue and expenditure point of view this year.
So, you can s- oh, forgot about the microphone. So, in the first chart, you'll see the 2025 numbers. This shows the original budget, the final budget, and then what actually happened. You can see in the first column that the village had originally anticipated a use of fund balance of 1.56 million, but ended up at a net loss of only about 23,000. So, that was mainly derived from the surplus in the revenues. So, the village brought in 26.54 million. The majority of that is your real property taxes, which accounts for 19 million. But the budgetary savings occurred in sales tax, which brought in 255,000 more than originally anticipated. Recreation fees were up 165,000 over what was originally budgeted, and your interest was up approximately 100,000 from what was originally budgeted. Then, in the expenditures, the village had 24.61 million, and you also expended less than you originally had anticipated. The majority of the expenditures occur from salaries and the related health benefits and other fringe benefits for the operations of the village. And then, in the other financing sources, the largest line is the transfers line, which goes to the other funds. And then, your beginning fund balance was 12.5 million, and at the end of the year, it was slightly down by the 23,000 to bring it to 12.48 million.
So, the way I look at this, you know, in the 25 column, as she indicated, when you adopted this budget, you actually anticipated reducing your fund balance. If everything came in on budget, revenues and expenditures, your fund balance would have actually declined by one and a half million dollars. But because, as she indicated, revenues came in better than you, you know, conservatively estimated, and your spending came in, you know, just over half a million dollars, less than what you anticipated, which is really only about 2%. Those things kinda gave you like a break-even year where you had, you know, just a small decrease in fund balance by 23,000. So, that number in the variance column next to the negative 23,000 of a million five is what we would call like a budget surplus, that you did a million and a half dollars better than, than your plan. So, you know, that's really good news. And so, you still have, as, as Carolyn said, almost 12 and a half million in fund balance. So, if we go to the next slide.
Scott, can I mention one thing? So, one of the things we also like to look, and this is if you wanna look on page 19, you might be able to read it a little bit easier, because the screen is kinda small, but I know they, they have the PowerPoints also. One of the things we always look forward to is try to make sure that we're not overtaxing the residents and making sure that our expenditures are within appropriate budgets as well as revenues. You wanna be conservative, but not too conservative that we're, again, we don't wanna be overtaxing. So, if you look at the excess rev- the variance with the final budget, you know, we wanna be within a certain small percentage to show that we're budgeting appropriately. So, we were pleased this year to see, you know, we're, total revenues were within 3.7% of total revenues budgeted on the actuals, and on the expenditures, it was 2.2%. So, as, as you mentioned before, was, you know, the budget was tight but appropriate, and we weren't overtaxing or anything like that.
So, the next slide is the fund balance. So, that ending number that you saw on the previous slide of just under 12 and a half million is the bottom number in the first column all the way to the, to the left for the general fund, that 12.4 million. So, your fund balance is broken up into different pots of funds. The first amount is a very small amount, what's called non-spendable, $21,000. That's just for certain items that you pay for by May 31st, but they're really for the next fiscal year. The cash is out the door. So, that portion of fund balance is set aside, but very small amount, 21,000. The next portion of your fund balance are things that are restricted. So, you have almost one and a half million of the 12 and a half million fund balance are restricted for these specific things. You have money restricted for debt service. So, you have it broken down into two pieces. You have 868,000 that would be available for future fiscal years, and the 362,000 is what you use to balance the budget you're in right now. So, when you close out projects that have, that were bonded, you're required, if you have monies left over, that has to go into a debt reserve and be used to pay the debt that was originally issued for those capital projects. Or it's interest earnings on, on, on the reserve, and, and the interest goes in there. So, this money can only be used to help offset future debt obligations that you budget for each year, your principal and interest on, on all your borrowed capital projects. And then, you also this year have about 266,000 set aside for the playing field facility that obviously, over, you know, multiple years, has to be, you know, replaced and, and upgraded. So, this would be a pot of funds that you are accumulating to help fund those costs, you know, down the road when it's time to replace the, the field. So, that's a million and a half dollars of your fund balance. The next group is something a little unique to, to Rybrook here. You commit fund balance, and that's by board action. So, each year, you set aside some of the surplus that you generate, and you use it to fund many capital projects without having to go bond for them and incur interest costs. So, what you have is you essentially now have 1.6 million dollars set aside for future years, and you used almost the same amount, 1.6 million, in the budget you're in right now. So, you budget money from this, you appropriate it, you transfer these funds to your capital projects fund, and then the projects that you're, you're working on get done. And then, this kinda becomes the way you've operated here, is it's kind of like a rolling thing. So, you take and then you, you, you put back in each year. So, you always have a rolling pot of funds to do the capital projects that, that you have. That, and you're not going out to bond for those. So, you're saving interest costs. Then, what you really have left is assigned fund balance of just 43,000, which is for purchase orders. So, those are just purchase order encumbrances that were just not completed by the end of May 31st. So, those purchase orders roll over, amend this year's budget that you're in, so you could finish paying those, those purchase order obligations. So, what you're really left with in is your free and clear fund balance, your unassigned fund balance is 7.7 million dollars. That's a relatively healthy fund balance, given that your budget's about 25 million dollars or so. That's about a 30%, if I have my math correct, on the spot. So, that, that's a very healthy fund balance. That's available to deal with any, you know, emergencies, problems that, that may arise that were not budgeted for, you know, during the year. So, it's there, and, you know, it could be there to help provide property tax relief down the road if need be, or, or any, you know, host of different things.
Future, future capital projects.
And future capital projects as well. So, money kinda gets cycled through the fund balance that way. So, really, a very strong position for your general fund. And then, the final slide or two, I just wanna show what the current outstanding debt burden for the villages at the end of the fiscal year. So, you have two types of debt at the end of the fiscal year. You have some short-term capital borrowings, known as bond anticipation notes. You started the fiscal year with about 1.2 million in those obligations. You paid down 580,000 through the general fund budget, and so you ended the year with 600,000. And since past this end of the year, you've now actually paid these off in, in the current year. So, currently, there's no debt in the form of bond anticipation notes. And then, your other big debt is what's out there for bonds. You had a big bond issue about seven years ago that was originally for 14 million dollars or so. It was a 30-year bond, and it currently has just under a 12-million-dollar balance left on it.
That's the high- that's the highway garage. That's our highway garage, yep.
And then, there was also that big tax sorcery matter back in 2018, where, again, you did that over a, a 10-year payback period on that borrowing, and that one is down to a balance of 515,000. So, your total bonded current outstanding debt is 12 and a half million dollars, which is, you know, not a high burden for, for a village with a budget, you know, this size, what your annual debt service is. Lastly, I just wanna talk about a number that really, this page, page nine, that really doesn't impact the general fund per se, but it impacts some of the other statements that have to appear in the audited financial statement. There's a, a GASB that came out years ago, GASB 75. It used to be GASB 45. It got updated. When I started, there were only seven GASBs. Now, there's 104, so, been around too long. So, what this pronounced, so there's essentially two sets of financial statements in your full financial statement booklet. You have the fund statements that you deal with on a day-to-day basis, your general fund, your capital fund, and some other smaller funds. That's what you deal with. That's how you, you budget. You ask the residents to, to support that budget. Then, we also have to put another kind of financial statement in there that's known as a full accrual statement. What that is, we have to throw the whole kitchen sink of all long- of all long-term liabilities into that statement as if you were a regular business and had to show all your debts, all your assets, like capital assets, buildings. None of that stuff is in your day-to-day general fund. But for this statement, we have to throw in all the long-term liabilities. One of those liabilities that they require to be, excuse me, to be in there is for post-employment benefits. As you know, when somebody retires, you provide health insurance and other benefits in retirement. You hire an actuary to do a present value calculation of what that future benefit would be for all your active employees. The actuary came back in doing that calculation and said you have a forty-six-million-dollar liability. That's a present value liability. So it's kind of estimating your twenty-five-year-old employee. Are they going to be here thirty years from now? What's the health insurance going to be in thirty years? And present valuing that back to today for everybody. They came up with forty-six million dollars, and that's why you'll see generally in the financial statement on one of the first statements that are in the full financial statement, you'll see a page that has a lot of negative numbers on it. But everybody has tons of negative numbers. I could tell you for like Westchester County, this number's like three-and-a-half billion dollars. So it's, you know, it's all relative, I guess. So it's just a requirement from the accounting board. You're not even allowed to fund that. Now, other states offer, just like you have a pension, a state pension system, where you actually put money in every year that the state requires you to do, and that money is invested by the state, and then when somebody is ready to retire, that's how they get paid their pension benefit. New York, years ago, New York State was going to try to set up a similar kind of trust fund for OPEB and allow places, not mandate, but allow you to say, hey, I got extra money. Let me put it into this. And eventually, it might grow to something, oh, thank you, and help you pay that health insurance in thirty years for someone. That never went anywhere with New York State. So currently, everybody in New York State is essentially on pay-as-you-go for health costs, right? You pay your premium every month, you budget for it every year as you're constructing the budget, and that's the story. So when you see a statement in there that looks very negative, it's primarily because of this, as well as certain other things. But that's the primary driver. So anyway, just to bring this to a conclusion and then take any questions you have, we also provided, in addition to the financial statement, we provided a communication letter that we're required to do, where we would report if we found any of the deficiencies that I mentioned earlier. We have to rate them on a scale of three things: minor control deficiencies, higher level-up, more significant kind of deficiencies in your financial accounting system, or material weaknesses. I'm happy to report that we don't even report a low-level control deficiency here, which we do at most places, right? So you should be really proud of that, because we wish we could have that everywhere so I wouldn't have to write a huge letter all the time. But that really is special, because we could tell you, we have almost no places that we don't report any kind of findings. So you really should be like proud of that, and your folks here should be proud of that. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions that you folks have.
Sure. Well, I would first say thank you for this. And, you know, we've gotten to see you reporting on this a few years, at least a few years. And, you know, certainly I have sitting here, and we are very proud of what we have here. And, you know, Trish, Lawrence, and everyone else up there really does a fantastic job in, as we say all the time, keeping our books really clean. And it's not easy, you know, as you know, we've switched payroll software, we've switched the record-keeping, the way even we look at the budgets in the spring has completely changed. And to keep this seamless through all of that is has not been easy. You know, this is, it really shows the level of professionalism that we have here in Rybrook. You know, my personal opinion is we should increase more debt. We need to need a project. Michael's looking at me like, yes.
Michael's just, he's perked up.
He is perked up. You know, just to make sure that we're making sure that we're planning for future years and future generations.
We couldn't even spring for T-shirts on Rybrook.
I know. I love launching them out of the cannon. But it's, you know, this really is great. And I know, over the years, I think, you know, there have been occasional control deficiencies that we've found here, and it's more just something in reporting, something that needs to be altered a little bit. But, you know, nothing that would rise above that. And it shows that we've clearly, you know, looked at all of those and everything. So I just want to say thank you to Trish, thank you to Lawrence, thank you to everyone else, and Chris, of course, your leadership through all of this. It makes it so that, you know, and again, all of this for the public, all of this is available online, that we keep running throughout the year where our budget stands, where our budget was. Everything is available and open to the residents of Rybrook to look at it anytime, right on top in our webpage. So, you know, it's something we certainly pride ourselves on in Rybrook.
I think you should invite the public to fully appreciate what we heard tonight, to come to our budget workshops in the spring, and let them see how we get these numbers.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. And I certainly would invite any member of the public who's watching, please be part of our budget process. It really is, the budget is a lot of times the policy of the village. That's what the budget really is. It shows where our priorities are, you know, when we're doing upwards of five-hundred-thousand dollars a year in repaving our streets and street management, when we're investing in, you know, whether it was, you know, the new DPW yard that we built a few years ago. You know, this is really showing the importance, you know, what we're spending on our police, our fire, and how we've added to those, what we're spending on our recreation programs.
Flood mitigation.
What we're spending on flood mitigation and all the grants that we're doing that. That really shows, you know, where our commitments lie within the village of Rybrook, and it's through that budget process. And as we see, you know, we do take a very conservative approach here in Rybrook of, you know, we're not going to overestimate our revenues just to try and fix a budget hole, that we're really trying to be realistic here and work within what we have available to us, without overburdening our residents on the tax base. We're very lucky to have the homestead versus non-homestead here, and, you know, try and make it as much as we can. So please welcome other comments from the board.
So I'm thankful that we have great staff. Thank you for giving us this glowing review. I think that we have always had a glowing review, but we did take some years where you did insert something into the letter, and we improved it. We listened, and we improved, and now it's, dare I say, perfect. So thank you so much to you and your staff, and to Chris when he undergoes this. My question, if I can pose one, is the post-employment benefit liability. Is the state looking at changing that anytime going forward, like they do the pension? Like, wouldn't that be great? Wouldn't that be helpful?
I mean, it would require state legislation.
Yes, of course.
They have to create the trust fund, just like there's a pension trust fund for employees, teachers, police, and fire.
So who's behind that? I mean, who makes those decisions?
I think it was started, you know, years ago. There was always like legislation churning around, and then always something comes up, you know, whether it was COVID, whether it was something else.
What would be the negative to doing that?
Then there's, you know, some of it is also, I won't say like a political reality, but the concept of somebody today, let's say you had, you know, a million dollars left over, right, at the end of the year. You could decide, hey, we want to put that million dollars into that, you know, OPEB trust at the state. And then it's like locked away, like, that's it. You know, you can't like, oh, sorry, now I need it the next year. Can't do that. There would be, you know, some who would argue, hey, why am I charging taxpayers today for somebody who's like health benefits I'm going to pay for in thirty years? Let somebody thirty years from now like pay for that. So I think that's part of the give and take on this thing, that some don't believe that we should be doing that today for something that's, you know, down the road.
Right.
That's my understanding. I don't know, you know, where that legislation stands. I don't, you know.
No active discussion on that.
No, yeah.
You don't care.
Yeah, they, you know.
It doesn't change anything, is your point.
It doesn't, you know, that number is that number, right? The only thing that would change, remember, this is based on, it will change, you know, when the actuaries do it, it gets updated each year in your case, just like for everybody else. You know, it's based on a whole host of factors, you know, how much the insurance premiums, you know, go up each year, right? Also, how you, you know, a place negotiates its contracts, right? So if I have two villages, and one has employees contribute ten percent, and one has employees contribute twenty percent, well, one's OPEB liability is going to be lower at the other one, right? So that's what it's really dependent on, you know, all those kinds of things. So.
And I do think, I think that's, my personal opinion is, a lot of the discussion about OPEB costs and has impacted more the boards throughout the state, as well as the community focusing on those long-term cost negotiations. You know, a lot of, some places that think very short-term might give away benefits for the future for something now, and that's often not the best decision to make. And you, so I think it forced everyone to look at and say, okay, we need to get more contributions, or contributions in retirement, or, you know, capping your number of leave days and things like that, so you don't have as much exposure. So I think that, I think one of the good results of having more focus in the audit is, has been on negotiations and future benefits. Yeah. I think people really were forced to really say, we need to curtail those long-term costs.
But there are other states that do have trust lines. I know Connecticut does, and, you know, many of the municipalities put money aside each year into these OPEB trusts, and then it's used to help, you know, they could draw down, to use it to pay health benefits, you know, each year going, you know, going forward. So it offsets what they have to budget.
Well, I'm sorry that I took you off course, but I'm so thankful that Chris has such a handle on everything. So again, thank you, Chris, and I'm sure you too.
And the real experts right there, you know, Trish, Trish Lapri and Lauren Simmons, they and the Treasury team just do a really great job. So we're so lucky. And just for the record, the comments that we were mentioning were in prior years, not before.
Yes, I said that. I said years ago. I did say in the past.
Yes, pre-Trish.
I did say that. And we have been, we've had this very clean, unmodified statement for years, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
So what the board has said, you know, I certainly second and echo and say, you know, great job by all of both of you and your whole team, and working also with the departments to keep us on track too, and looking, having the big picture in mind. So thank you, guys.
Trustee Crum.
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. The question is, on the changes, on the big white book, I'll call it, on the changes in position got better by a little over, a bit over eight million dollars. Was that mostly driven by the change in assumptions on the other employment, the other post-employment benefit liability?
Yes.
So that we went from like twenty-four and change negative, now we're fifteen and change negative. So that was mostly due to the assumptions?
Yes.
Because I was.
Yes.
Also.
What page is that?
That's on page B or page seven. Because I was also a bit, I first thought it might be coming from the NRCS recovery buyout program.
Some of that is true, because some of those costs are getting capitalized as a capital asset versus expense on the fund level, like through the capital fund as you spend it, it's an expense, but it's a capitalized cost.
We got reimbursed for the program.
Correct.
But then, even though we may have spent it, or our obligation is going to be depreciated or amortized over time.
Yeah. So what you have is a situation, let's say you took in six million dollars, I think was around the number. So on the fund level, there's an expense for six million for buying all the properties. And you had the revenue from the federal government of drawing down the six million. So on a fund level's point of view, it's a zero, right? For this statement, though, you get the revenue recognized at six million, but the six million that was spent is not expense on this statement, right? It was capitalized as like a capital asset. So there's no expense, but you have the six million revenue. That would be the driver of why that increased.
So for this statement, changes in net position on page seven and eight, maybe it's mostly because of the way NRCS is being capitalized versus from a change in assumption on the post-employment benefit liability.
Right. Like if you look on page seven that you're referring to, and you see the second line that says capital assets, you see a huge increase from the prior year. That's like the six million dollars essentially for that, net of any depreciation that was taken on other stuff.
Okay, thank you. And then my comment was, sort of just to echo on Chris, I noticed on almost every category, the budget discipline, I'll say, was excellent. You know, I'm used to, you know, some departments or some categories going over, some going under, maybe overall it's great. But this was across the board. People really were sticking to their budgets. And, you know, I know we're, I know we're well into two thousand twenty-six, do we call it twenty-five, twenty-six?
Twenty-six, yeah.
So it's a different ballgame now. But I also noticed that the actual expenses were like less than the year before on almost every category. So again, I know people were really working hard to make the most out of expenses. And so thank you to everybody, and thank you for the clean accounting of it, and for keeping the department, helping to keep departments on task. But I think that's a great management. Overall, any of the managers, I compliment on that.
Thank you. And we should, but we should mention too, this audit has additional information about those federal funds in this case. And if you look on page sixty-six, it's a quick summary, but you can see that's where the NRCS funds, you know, and other funds that we received have to be accounted and documented. So we have to do this federal single audit where we have to, we're required to provide additional information on any federal funds received.
Correct. And we recently just, there's a separate upload that has to happen to the federal government when you have over seven-hundred-fifty thousand in federal spending, which next year goes to a million dollars. So because the NRCS program was six-point-two million dollars, you certainly had that requirement this year. So once we're done with the audit, we actually upload this document along with a file that the federal government, it's known as the Federal Audit Clearing House creates. We fill in that document with all, you know, whatever information they're looking for. It tells them, here was the federal dollars this entity spent, here was the federal program that the auditors looked at. Did we, you know, it tells them the auditors had no findings, you know, compliance findings with the federal dollars that were spent. We upload it to this portal on the Federal Audit Clearing House, the FAC as it's called. That somehow is still working during the shutdown, unfortunately. And then we sign off on it as auditor, and you folks here, Trish signed off on it as audity. So that has already been filed with the federal government. I can't say the same for our school district that we audited this summer, because the federal government, pre-shutdown, in the spring, normally publishes what's known as a compliance supplement. It's literally a two-thousand-page booklet of every federal program that they distribute monies to around the country. Normally, that booklet is finalized in the spring, and it's effective for June thirty-year ends. Well, the federal government has not still, we're in November now, has still not finalized the twenty-five compliance supplement. So we have not been able to do the same with any of our school districts that have a federal filing requirement. So those are all on hold until they issue a final. So if nothing happens, you could get swept up in that by the time yours is for next year unless.
Right now, the NRCS has had to stop because we can't get approval of the demo plans because they're shut down.
So that's some of the fun we also had this summer, that we couldn't do what we normally do for the school districts. And we'll have to go back eventually and then do a separate filing.
Right, it'll be all catch-up.
Yeah. So we had to issue their financial statements because SED has requirements, but we had to kind of carve out like the back part of this report that Chris just referred to. We had to carve that out for the schools. We had to carve that out for the schools and not include it. And then eventually we have to go back and and we don't know yet how this works.
But that's across the board for all schools.
For any June thirtieth year ends, so. And now going forward, so.
And the last thing I just want to point out too is fifty-seven and fifty-eight, that's where you'll see the capital project length schedule. And that's when you see us closing projects and transferring for projects. That's where you see that, we always said we need to keep that updated and up to date on, you know, and closing out those that are finished and so forth. So kind of list everything out all at once uh during that fiscal year.
Correct. And you do see the NRCS is is the biggest project on the page, about two-thirds of the way down. That has a budget of, originally a budget of twenty-eight and a half million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, I I would just like to, you know, of course, thank Trish and Lawrence and all our department heads. But I think we would be remiss if we did not recognize the tone set by Chris Bradbury, who basically leads our village. And so thank you, Chris.
Thank you. But we hire good people, that's for sure. That's important. That's so important. We've hired some great people that do just a great job together as a team. And thank you to the board too. You guys are the ones that set the financial policies that we do live by. You know, we we stick with our financial policies. We make sure that we stay within certain limits and that we don't want to overtax people and it comes to leadership of the board as well. So thank you.
I I have one other question. I see that we have the um long-term debt. And do we ever think about uh prepaying any of this since interest is like a big charge of it?
Yes, some debt you can prepay, some debt you can't prepay.
Pay that.
We did merge uh serial bond a couple of years ago. We merged a few, I think actually the taxer one, isn't that a merged bond? Or there was two sections, part of it got paid off early earlier. Um, we have paid off some bands, right, early? No, but when we, we've done that over the years.
This is a bond.
We we do think, I do think we're gonna, we're gonna have a serial bond next year potentially. Um, that we'll talk about later on in budget, not today, but you know, future budgeting for discuss, for discussion.
And I also, I mean, from a policy standpoint, and I've said this at at at, you know, during the budget process and other times. When we're looking at bonds and especially with the serial bonds. So we built, you know, we we did a serial bond to build the highway garage. You know, for me, and this is again strictly not financial viewpoint, but a policy standpoint. For me, I feel that when you are building something that's gonna last you that long and something that future residents are going to be taking advantage of it.
It should be paid.
They should be part of the paying for it. That it's that that, you know, to me, it's the reason you bond something long-term is so that it's not, the burden isn't just on today's residents.
I understand.
And so if we were to take some of that extra fun and pay it off early, that's to the benefit of future residents at the harm of the current residents, where potentially we could spend that money elsewhere for something right now. So, I mean, there's multiple ways to look at that. You could also say, well, but then you paid on your debt so that you can get other debt and that moves forward. But it's my personal opinion that that's part of the reason why you're bonding things is so that it's it's that the residents over time.
I understand.
Yeah, that residents over time are paying for it.
The other thing, you also have the option of depending on how you structure like bonds and you would talk with your fiscal advisors on this. Sometimes when you issue bonds, you can have a call provision in those bonds. Where, you know, if you find, you know, five years in or seven years into the bond, interest rates have come down. And you could, you know, just like you would on a mortgage, right? You would refinance if you had a lower rate. If you had an average rate of four percent and now seven years into this bond, you could get it for three percent by refinancing it. Then you do that and it reduces your future interest cost.
Yeah, we, and we have done that, we have done that selectively in the past too. And one of the reasons we don't have a lot of bands right now, and remember a band is up, we do five-year bond anticipation note. Remember, the interest rates also change every year. They're up every year, so they could change year to year uh on a band. So you issue a band, every year that rate will change or whatever it is, will fluctuate um for the next year. But also with our fund balance, what we try to do, since our fund balance is a healthy fund balance, it's appropriate. You know, we're able to pay the, a lot of our ongoing expenses for capital projects. We don't want to see, you know, because we don't want the fund balance to get too high either. We want to balance out. And those are policy discussions we talk about at our at our budgetary meetings, where we try to say, okay, is this something we should bond or is this something we should do a serial bond for? And that's, that's the policy discussions we all need to make during our budget season. Um, but there are different decisions, you know. Sometimes you, well, why would we, we don't want to take out a ban because we have the cash and we shouldn't keep that in our fund balance. We should be giving it back to the taxpayers. If it's particularly something that's ongoing, like road road resurfacing, you don't want to ban that because you're gonna do it every year. You know, it's gonna be an annual cost that you're gonna incur. Sewer work, we do uh what, three fifty every year. We don't want to finance those types of things. But there might be a one-time one that you could consider if it was of a decent size. And also bands, and the numbers have also gotten way up on, in order to get a competitive ban, you need to have enough of a project too. It needs to be, what would you say, seven fifty? What do they want now for a competitive ban, a project size, a cost? More than a million now, yeah. It used to be, we used to do them for four, five hundred thousand dollars now. Now you'd want a million dollars to do it.
So I guess my point is, I just want to make sure that we are cognizant of the the rates. And if our bonds are callable, I don't know if ours is, we can refinance it. And I understand we want to have it out over time and I agree, but always reducing debt service is good for everybody.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's my point.
Definitely.
Any other questions or comments regarding the audit?
No, great. We're so lucky.
Thank you again.
Very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming before us also to with the report. Having been given the report, we move into resolution number one, considering approving the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five audit report.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five audit report provided by KPKF O'Connor Davies.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And and I I always question this because, you know, even if we didn't like what it said, we'd still have to approve it. It's still, it's still a matter of fact.
I also want to thank Carolyn for making Scott look good.
No, and I'd say thank you to both of you for again presenting this. Um, not just us, but also for anyone watching in the public that they can view this, um, you know, even weeks from now, months from now. If they had a question about it, they'd be able to look back on it, on the presentation, but also the the audit itself.
Uh, any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Good night, guys.
Tricia Lawrence, thank you again. Have a good evening. Not staying for the rest? There is a budget transfer in here coming up. All right, resolution number two. Oops, I clicked on the wrong thing.
Resolution, huh? Refresh the page? Okay.
Oh, refresh the page? I was gonna say, the ambulance corps. Okay, hang on a second. Okay, refresh the pa, there's a resolution. Thank you.
I gotta, you gotta sign, I have to sign out and then come back in.
Okay, resolution, do you want me to read?
Sure.
All right, resolution number two, considering the approval of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-six budget for the Portchester Rye, Rye Brook Ambulance Corps, Inc. I'll just go ahead. Whereas the Village of Rye Brook has an agreement with the Portchester Rye, Rye Brook Ambulance Corps, Inc. PCR, R, B, EMS for emergency medical services, in which the Village of Rye Brook contributes its share of the annual budget based upon a formula of seventy-five percent, split equally among the three member municipalities and the other twenty-five percent based upon population. And whereas the the PCR, B, EMS uh committee approved the twenty-two, twenty-six budget at their October twenty-twenty-five meeting, that includes many service and retention recommendations from the EMS study consultants resulting in necessary additional expenses for this essential emergency service and.
Whereas the Rye Brook's annual payment share for the twenty-two, twenty-six EMS budget will be five ninety-six, six oh eight and seventy cents to be paid in quarterly installments of one hundred forty-nine thousand, one fifty-two and seventeen cents. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rye Brook Board of Trustees hereby approves the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-six uh Portchester Rye, Rye Brook EMS budget of five million, four hundred nineteen thousand, one forty-six and ninety-four cents resulting in a Rye Brook municipal contribution totaling five ninety-six, six oh eight and seventy cents for the fiscal year ending, uh fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Chris, now this does represent a significant increase over previous year. Can you please explain the five-year plan?
Sure.
That we're now.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So um, a number of years ago, there was a, we had a consultant do a study. We also looked at recruitment, retention issues with the EMS corps. And uh the boards all decided, all three municipal boards, which is Portchester, Rye Brook and Rye City, agreed that we want, um, for instance, the employees that work for the EMS to say, to know that this is their home EMS, that they were severely underpaid and as a result had to work three, four different jobs and didn't really have one particular home. We want people to come and stay because there's a real benefit to that and having a continuity of an EMS force. Um, so we we've been very successful in terms of retention and recruitment. Um, it's a really dedicated group. There's a lot of pride in our EMS agency. Um, they have an explorers program now that's eighty-nine kids, children, youth are in it, which is the biggest one around. And, you know, that provides future people that have worked for us and worked for elsewhere or worked in the healthcare field. So it's really been successful. We are in the fourth year of a planned five-year salary plan uh to get in recruitment for retention issues. And we are, so we have one more year left after this. And if you remove the costs for that, it's a flat budget. So there is no increase in the municipal budget at all. Um, except for the uh planned contribution, the five, in the five-year plan. So it's a flat budget without that.
Thank you, Chris. You know, from a, from a personal standpoint, I feel we are very lucky to have the EMS that we do. A lot of municipalities go different directions. Uh, there's certain municipalities, you know, larger cities included. You know, some, New York City, I think, has it in with their fire. So, um, you know, for a smaller municipality, there are different options. Some municipalities contract out for these. We're very lucky that the municipalities are, you know, with Rye, Portchester, um, had it, you know, had the forethought years ago to really band together to have this shared service among our communities. And it is phenomenal. Um, year after year, we see the metrics come back, the response rates, the response times. Um, everything is is really just top-notch. And it really is a, an essential service that we provide uh to our residents. Um, and, you know, the five-year plan for me, you know, while it is a hit to our budget, um, you know, and and at what was back then a tough time because of the loss of the hotels. Um, at the same time, this is how you get good people to come and stay and make a career out of it in the Portchester, Rye, Rye Brook EMS uh system. And so, um, you know, I'm heartedly approve this, you know, from a personal standpoint. Um, and, you know, we thank everyone involved for all that they do to help keep our residents safe.
Mayor, can I just add too, and I should, I should mention, this is a very high-level EMS service that's provided to the residents, which is dictated by the three communities saying what service level they're looking to, to, they want in their communities. And there is a municipal say in that, you know, there's, those choices are choices made by the municipalities when they contract with this not-for-profit that was formed, as the mayor said, you know, a number of decades ago. Um, their response times are phenomenal. They're really great. But I should, I should mention too, it's over seven thousand calls a year. I mean, it's, that's incredible in three communities, but there's over seven thousand calls a year. That's a lot of calls each and every day. And and you see them, they come to our events and they, it's like they're swinging in and swinging out as they keep getting calls the whole time that we're sitting in the event. And they're also there to support our other services, you know, they're there to support the police, they're there to support the fire as well as the residents as well. So it's a nice system, um, and it's one that we have a municipal say in. I think there's a lot of pride in that, that all three communities should have in setting up this service and maintaining it the way it is.
And I should also say that, and and thank you, Chris, for that. And um, I I would also say that when we went into this five-year plan, there were a list of goals that were created and a, and a overwhelming majority of them
Yes.
have already been met with a, with a few more to go.
And an annual budget, municipal, our municipal impact is under six hundred thousand dollars, which if you look at the service level and you look at the cost for essential services, it's, it's really amazing. You know, it's a really great service for, it's a great value in our budget.
Absolutely. Um, you know, I'd open this up to any comment from the board?
Um, I, I think it's fine. It's great. I just, I also wanted to bring up shared services and um the number of lift assists going to other um areas not within our uh range and how that is increasing. I know that we have uh agreed to also help out Rye, et cetera, and Harrison, and that has increased. So how are we uh?
Well, the the mutual aid was a, we do definitely, we do a lot of mutual aid calls out, more, a lot more out than we do in. And on a countywide basis, we're trying to look at that whole issue because there's certain imbalances there throughout the county. Um, like we go to Harrison a lot, but what you have to take it to the next step is we may be going to Harrison, but a lot of times we're going to Harrison is because Harrison's covering White Plains. So there tends to be this little domino effect. So it's a bigger issue on a group that's countywide, not as organized as it should be. And that's what we're trying to work to do on a countywide basis, to get more organization. Um, the first question was about.
Uh, then also, um, I know that we are also responsible for the airport and I wanted to see where we were on negotiating uh their compensating us for that as well.
It's a big sigh. But you asked a question, what was the first question you asked? Lift assist. Um, one of the things you're seeing, and this is what we're discussing on our EMSC committee, which again, municipally driven, right? It's all the municipalities. One of the trends you're seeing across the coun, the country now is lift assist issues and whether or not you should be charging the agency where you're going to, maybe not an individual home, but an agency. Where if it's an agency that has recurring lift assist, that maybe there should be a charge for lift assist fee, a lift assist fee. Because you don't get reimbursed for that, so unless there's a transport. So that's something that we're talking about on the EMSC and I'll keep you updated as that goes through. I brought, I actually brought that up.
Staff on-site at some of these facilities.
Well, that's another way to do it. We we put it into our site plan requirements and we shared that with the other municipalities that they should be considering the same thing.
Right, because we only have another senior facility coming our way, so our lift assist percentage is going to increase going forward.
Yeah, and yeah, and um, we want to make sure that other places, when they have opportunities for that, uh, when they have doc, you know, plans for things, senior housing or other housing that may have more lift assists, that they make sure there's staff on-site to be able to handle that. The other part with the airport, that's a, that's a frustrating one. We thought we had a commitment with Westchester County last year and uh we thought we had an agreement. And now it seems that the county is proposing an alternate agreement, which does not, which, when I say pales in comparison, it's not even close. So, um, we wrote, we just, we replied in kind that that was not an, um, wasn't acceptable.
Okay.
I'll give more in executive session if you like.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I know you're on top of everything, but I know that's on top of my mind.
When I say we, and it's all three communities going to the county on that, not just, not just Rye Brook, but it's all, all three communities.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments from the board regarding the budget for the ambulance corps?
Trustee Epstein?
I just want to clarify one thing. I brought it up because it affects the budget.
No, it does, absolutely. No, no, no.
That's why I brought that up at the same time. So yes.
No, absolutely. We appreciate you bringing these up.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the EMS service for all that they do. Uh, resolution number three, considering declaring police vehicles as surplus.
Whereas the Village of Rye Brook Police Department, as vehicles that are no longer functional value are used to the village and may have resale value. And whereas vehicles being listed for surplus are still in service and the current mileage may change, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees declares the vehicles listed below a surplus with those items to be published in the official paper of the village and sold to the highest qualified bidder through an appropriate electronic bidding process with Auctions International. And there is a two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer, a two thousand fourteen Ford Explorer, a two thousand a two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer, and a two thousand sixteen Chevy Impala. And be it further resolved that if no bids are, bids are received for a particular item, that items may be disposed of through appropriate means. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purpose of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I'm assuming these vehicles are- We have, I think we have done that in the past. And I think the question, it's a good question from, from Trustee Heiser, is whether, whether, you know, we ever take any of these vehicles and just park them in front of places like maybe even the school.
The marked, the marked vehicles.
It's act as a deterrent if we don't get enough money for it.
To speeding, almost. Deterrent to speeding.
Or in front of buildings that might be subject to miscreants.
Miscre-
What's the person realizing there's no one in it? What's he gonna do?
He'd have to move it every now and then. When there's weeds growing over top of it.
So, so I assume that if we don't sell it, we also take off the parts, perhaps like the tires or which we have changed?
Anything that's re, can be reused, which is usually very little.
Okay. And all of the, uh, wiring stuff and that stuff, what happens to that?
No, that, that, we take more time and cost to remove it than it would to the, to gain the value that may or may not even be able to be used in the upgraded vehicle. But you guys still take the, uh, striping off or it depends on who it goes to? Like, you know, the markings saying it's Ry Brook?
Right, of course. It's a police station. They'll just change the village.
Gotcha. Alright. Any other questions or comments? Hopefully we get some good value for these.
That's right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crom?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
I, I didn't hear you. Yes. Thank you. Uh, and now on the flip side, resolution number four, considering accepting a grant from the, from DASNE, uh, for the purchase of two police department motorcycles and transfer funds for the purchase of police motorcycles.
Whereas the Village of Ry Brook was awarded a grant from the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York for up to a hundred thousand dollars to purchase two motorcycles
Excuse me.
for the police department. And whereas the Village of Ry Brook seeks to purchase two motorcycles for the department from Bergen Harley Davidson as part of Westchester County contract. And whereas the total estimated cost for those two vehicles, two motorcycles is one oh four, three eleven, and fifty-eight cents. And whereas the Village of Ry Brook will need to transfer up to seventy-five hundred dollars to cover any remaining cost for the two motorcycles, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the grant from the Dormitory Authority of the State up to a hundred thousand dollars. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the purchase of two motorcycles from Bergen Harley Davidson as part of the county contract and the contract numbers listed in the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
First off, we're very thankful to have this grant. Um, I know that the motorcycle we've been using, uh, is David-
The oldest in the county at this point, eh?
To save the lease.
By far?
That's worth money. That'll be worth money.
Yeah, maybe. Although I, you could put it, you, I was gonna say, you put it on display, yeah. We're gonna put that thing on display. It's, uh, yeah. Kinda looks like the Chips vehicle.
Do you remember what year it is?
That'll be a great-
Say that, that TV show was in the eighties, I think.
That'll be a great photo op. Take a photo with your-
Maybe it'll entice some new filming in, in Village Hall.
Fabulous. Birthday parties.
Birthday parties.
Rinse it out. Rinse it out.
I would mention, so we currently have one motorcycle. This would be two motorcycles, uh, given the grant that was received. We just want to make sure the board's aware of that.
Right.
Yes, I saw that. Somebody else is getting trained.
Oh, Hasbeen. We have two now. Wonderful. Because I know Sergeant Alexander was, was for a long time the only one, right?
The what?
Sergeant Alex-
Oh, yeah, Titus, yeah.
Now Sergeant.
Yeah. Sergeant Alexander was
Yeah.
our trained officer.
Alright, any other questions or comments? We're very happy to have these coming in.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crom?
Yes, thank you for the grant.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering approving fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six capital fund transfer and general fund budget modification.
Now therefore be resolved that fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six capital fund transfer and general fund budget modification be approved to establish the budget for the purchase and outfitting of the two new police motorcycles funded through an inter-fund transfer in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars from the capital fund and the Community Resiliency Economic Stability and Technology Program, otherwise known as CREST, grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars administered by the Dormitory Authority. So this is a transfer of, uh, for the, for those motorcycles in the amount of, from a balance and account, um, of the, of seventy-five hundred, going from one capital balance to this particular fund through an inter-fund transfer. And it basically sets up so that the project is funded not at a hundred thousand, but at a hundred seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I'm surprised that Trish and Lawrence didn't want to stick around for this. As we say, in most of these-
Who do you think wrote it?
As we say, in most of these, this is why our, our budgets come back so clean.
That's why I was pointing out the capital fund schedule, the, the capital fund, the capital project list schedule. That's the ones that you're always modifying here.
I do appreciate that.
And Chief, you had a comment?
Two thousand and two.
Oh, you found the answer.
Alright.
So those mot, that motorcycle was two thousand and two, so it's twenty-three years old.
Like new.
Like new.
It is in good shape. Yes. Alright, any questions or comments on this, uh, budget transfer modification? Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crom?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering authorizing emergency storm, storm sewer line repairs.
Whereas the storm drain line at thirty dash thirty-four Belfair Road has been compromised, compromised and is in need of emergency repair. And whereas the Superintendent of Public Works wishes to piggyback off town-village of Scarsdale municipal contracts with Morano Brothers Corp. and has received a proposal from them for a total estimated cost of seventy-four thousand, five ninety-seven, and twelve dollar, twelve cents. And whereas under our financial policy, a public bid is required for a purchase over thirty-five thousand dollars for public works projects. And whereas pursuant to general municipal law, an emergency purchase outside of the procurement policy uh, can be approved by the Board of Trustees to prevent threats to life, health, safety, and welfare of the residents. And whereas if not repaired on a timely basis, uh, the compromised storm drain line poses an imminent threat to health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Ry Brook. And whereas general municipal law, the Village, uh, Ry Brook seeks to improve, sorry, approve emergency authorization to piggyback off the town-village of Scarsdale municipal contracts with Morano Brothers to repair the storm drainage line at thirty dash thirty-four Belfair Road. And now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to general municipal law, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the emergency work to perform by Morano Brothers for a total estimated cost of seventy-nine, seventy-five, one oh nine, and thirty cents in accordance with the proposal that was received from, uh, based on the Scarsdale contract, which allows for piggybacking from other municipalities.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
So I have to say, I, I, I've saw the video of the water situation. Oh, I've seen video of it, of the water situation that resulted from this. Um, you know, I think by way of background, and it really says it in, in the resolution itself, but there is an existing, uh, storm drain line, a corrugated pipe, that failed. Um, and so we've, we've done this in the past. Um, thankfully, this wasn't a sewer line failure, which we've had to deal with as well. Um, within the last year, I think. I mean, was it a year, over a year ago? Um, and so, you know, these things happen in the village. It's, um, obviously, you know, the last thing we want to do is have to spend an unbudgeted seventy-five thousand dollars on something, uh, that we had. But I mean, this is what happens in, in the municipalities, that sometimes you have to deal with these. Um, we certainly understand this was a frustration for the homeowners in that area. And, you know, it's, I'm glad we were able to find what the cause of this was and have, have a resolution for it.
And I would mention too, so also we're, we're pleased that there was a contract that we could piggyback off that Mr. Noack was able to, to locate. Um, it's not an easy job. It's got trenching and shoring. It's on a hill. Um, washes out the, the, the back, your, back of the house, right, down below on the lower end of it. So, yeah, this isn't an easy job at all. Um, and we do, we do put money in our sewer budget for things that are, we don't account for. But it's, since it's this time in the year, it's not like we have, we always have that amount of money. So if you see there's no transfer, but it's very likely that a transfer will be needed as we get further into the year, particularly if there was, knock on wood, other projects that, other things that pop up that are either unexpected, because we, sometimes we do plan for some unexpected, but this obviously is a large project. So there's a possibility we'll need to do a transfer later as we get closer.
Gotcha. Do we have, do we know when this work might commence?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, as of right now, the lead time on the pipe is approximately a week to two weeks. Okay, it's, it's eighteen, eighteen-inch pipe and we need almost two hundred feet. So it's a pretty sizable amount of pipe that we're replacing here. Um, some of this pipe is currently failing or is showing the possibility of it, so I want to replace it in one shot. So we're looking within the next two weeks, potentially, to start. Um, it's not an easy project. It's on a slope. It's between five houses. So it's gonna be some frustration in getting this done. It's not gonna be a fun project. It's definitely not, not a fun project because of where it is.
Right. I'm assuming, I mean, this isn't the first time we've done this type of work on residents' properties like this, you know, where it's kind of in the right, you know, in, in an easement or right-of-way. It's, you know, it's, and then it, it affects, so probably we'll fix everything up as it goes and-
So as part of this, I will be reaching out to all the homeowners who will be impacted by equipment. We will be obtaining, uh, access easement agreements. Even though we have easements, we, we'll probably be outside of those easements due to the size of equipment we have to bring in, um, to do this work. So we're gonna be outside of the scope of the easement. So, yep, everything will be restored back to what it was.
So that's on the hill going down, if I'm looking at the map correctly?
Starts at High Point Circle, I think.
The, the drain line starts at High Point in the road. There are two catch basins that go um, in between two houses on High Point and they, and then they go down to Belfair Road in the back. And it's basically on that slope in between two manholes where the issue occurred. So, so we gotta bring in a machine that's got an extended reach, which is a pretty decent-sized excavator to reach, you know, another fifteen, twenty feet.
Right, to really get down.
Reach down and then we have to do shoring, sheeting. All has to be done. Yep.
Very smooth.
So basically the size of the machine is bigger than what we would normally bring in on a job like this.
Gotcha.
So it's gonna be outside of the scope of the easement.
Is, is the material of the pipe better on the replacement? Is there any, is it the same exact pipe we're putting in?
We're replacing with a double-wall HDP pipe, which is rated for direct burial at a greater depth. Um, I'm waiting to remove a section of the pipe that's there to evaluate it and see what, what happened. It is a material failure in the pipe.
It's odd that it would-
It basically went, basically it crumpled upon itself.
Any chance that our insurance, any chance that our insurance policy would know?
No, it was installed by the developer in the early, yeah, two thousand or whatever.
Yeah, whenever that, whenever-
Late ninety, uh, sorry, right, the end of nineties, two thousand in that range.
Yeah. And you get high velo, I mean, at that slope, you're getting a very high velocity and scour, probably.
There are step manholes, so you do have a drop, but based on the angle and slope, yeah. You do tend to get more, more of a flow and a speed behind it. Yeah. So, I mean, could've been a number of issues that caused this. As I said, I want to get my hands on it to evaluate it, see if I could find who the manufacturer was and reach out to them and see if they could do some engineering on it to determine, you know, is it age? Is it a material defect? Is it installation defect? I don't know.
I would imagine they leave this-
But I still want to find out for the future.
Yeah, just to, just to find out.
But for the future, I want to know.
I would imagine that pipe is all over Belfair.
That's what we're, that's why we want to find out more.
That's why I want to reach out to the manufacturer and find out.
Right.
Yeah.
Be a little proactive.
Get some hotel rooms for you.
One of the residents affected, yeah, contacted me. Their whole basement was destroyed or, you know, severely impacted. May, probably more than one, but the one person did contact me. And, uh, obviously they're not, I mean, they're not happy at all, obviously. And, uh, no, it's unfortunate. What can I say?
I was out there with Highway, um, immediately as it was happening. So we were out there, we saw. And, uh, what, it's eight days, nine days, and here we are, moving ahead.
Right. No, I mean, I-
Amazing.
No, and we are, we-
They are thankful for the, the, the speed that the village is moving and that we're taking this incredibly seriously, you know?
Yeah, and, and we are. We're taking this, you know, as we would with any other, you know, area, any other homes-
Right, absolutely.
in the Village of Ry Brook. And I would also say that, you know, then, we, the storm where this occurred was a very intense storm.
Yeah.
We got over two inches of rain in a very short amount of time. And, you know, we're very thankful that these, you know, it, it wasn't as bad as what we saw in Ida, thankfully. A lot of the storms in between have been of, well, you know, you may get that amount of rain, but over a much longer duration. Or you're getting a heavy burst of rain, but it's a shorter duration. This really was a, a very big storm. I have videos of my block where we get a lot of water coming off of Ridge Street, coming down our aisle onto our block. And, you know, there is a river going down our block. I mean, it's just, you know, the, the, you know, our, our stormwater systems are designed, you know, to carry a lot of water. But sometimes
Sees capacity.
they just get overrun. And, um, I should also say that, you know, a lot of this is really, you know, Chris mentioned earlier, when we were talking about our audit and our budget, we were talking about the, the stormwater projects that we have. And we really have a number of them in the village. We are way ahead of a lot of our, of the other municipalities, um, in Westchester, just because it's something that we've thought of, something that we, that we take seriously, whereas, you know, maybe we're behind in other areas, you know, um. But it's, it's, stormwater is something that we, we like to really be very proactive on. Um, we try and, uh, you know, do a lot of projects. We also work with the city of Ry. We've tried to work upstream and downstream along the Blind Brook. Um, and we also, I should say, are, are part of a newly reformed consortium that is Lizwick. The Long Island Sound Watershed, um, Intermunicipal Council. And so we're, we're very excited that this is reforming. There have been two meetings already and we'll be having some decisions coming our way, uh, most likely regarding an intermunicipal agreement on that, that right now is just out for comment. Um, and I've been participating in those meetings as something that, you know, as most of you know, is near and dear to my heart.
I was just gonna say, I suspect, I don't know, that our systems were not designed for the power and frequency of the storms we now see.
So historically, storm waters, uh, systems in a municipality are designed for a ten-year storm, typically, which is two, two point five, four inches in twenty-four hours. This storm event, we got just over two inches in just under two hours.
Yeah.
So.
Luckily, there's no such thing as climate change, so therefore.
No, and, and, you know, and again, what projects we can do, even, even the little bit of, um, actually more than a little bit, but even, you know, what we can accomplish through the buyout program, um, through the NRCS program, a little bit of extra storage. Looking back at our retention basin, looking at Acker Drive, looking at the, at, um, under Westchester Ave, looking at Avon and that project there. Looking at Brook Lane, installing the storm gauges. These are all things that we've been progressively building on to try and alleviate what we know is becoming a more major problem. And, and, you know, there's only so much we can do. If we could turn back time and, you know, back to when this was farmland and, and golf courses and whatever else was in the past of Ry Brook. And say anytime you develop a new house, you have to have onsite, onsite storage for the twenty-year storm even. It would've made a huge difference in all of this. But, you know, what we have is what we have. And we're looking at these projects, trying to make it better.
Those are all active projects that the mayor just mentioned that we're working on, that we have grants for almost every one of those. The, whether it be the Brook Lane rerouting of the pipes, whether it be another, another look at Richmond Park- Whether it be the Brook Lane rerouting of the pipes, whether it be another, another look at Richman Park to see what else could be done. Acker Drive, we have money for a new culverts there that are under, that the piping's there. Once we finish the Richman Park study, we can go ahead with that. We have the Avon one. Unfortunately, we just found out where, we were turned down for funding on the last grant application, which definitely was disappointing.
We did the whole CVA on it.
Yep, we have, because the brick, we were all banking on the brick, and the brick, brick funding grant went away. And so we tried the green resiliency one, which we just got turned down on. The, what other active projects? We're installing the, we're working with the city of Rye on the water gauge, the stream gauges, and we're trying to refocus on the sluice gate to make that more optimally operational, I guess. So yeah, we've got so much going on, on active projects, which is great. But there's always seems to be more to do with stormwater.
Always does. So, and again, thank you for your quick action and attention to this specific problem, which really was just a failure of a system installed, again, installed by the contractors when Belfair was being built, so.
Thank you. It's a team effort on Highway's part as well, because they were out there as well after, after the fact that I'm out there with the TV crews and doing that, so they always do help out. So, thank you to Highway.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Or any other tensions that we went on? All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crom?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Resolution number seven, considering authorization of funds for the 2025 Veterans Day ceremony to be paid to the American Legion for.
A much simpler resolution. Whereas the American Legion will host the 2025 Memorial Day Ceremony on November ninth, and whereas, which is passed, and whereas the village board would like to assist the American Legion with this event, now therefore be resolved that the village will pay six hundred dollars to the American Legion for the 2025 Veterans Day Ceremony.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
And i- if I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we do this every year. And, you know, I, I, I guess my only comment on this would, to ask the Legion to please send us a letter further in advance so that we're able to approve it prior to the event, not after the event. But any other questions or comments from the board?
No. I'm glad we can participate in that.
Yes, and we certainly appreciate any Rybrook residents who are veterans and certainly all veterans of the United States.
We thank them for their service.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crom?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. And I should mention, I was unable to attend that service. I was at multiple other Veterans Day services, including the county service last Friday up at Lazden Public Gardens. Okay, resolution number eight. Considering modifying the date of a village board meeting in December.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby cancels the meeting scheduled for December twenty-third due to scheduling conflicts.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, this is very typical. We typically only have one meeting in both December and August. And so this is, you know, a lot of times tends to be lighter agendas, also with the holiday schedule. And we know David would not want to miss.
Festivus.
Festivus. On, on, on December twenty-third, so.
Have to air our grievances.
The airing of grievances, yeah.
So, um, and again, you know, sometimes we will modify a, a date. There is a very busy December typically. My personal feeling is it's easier just to keep the originally planned December ninth meeting instead of trying to find another date. I would say if anyone else feels differently.
What's wrong with December ninth?
Nothing as far as.
Just leave it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the sixteenth wasn't going to work.
Right, exactly. So sometimes we'll put it between the two, but there are other commitments. On a lot of, I mean, especially everyone's got a lot of holiday parties, all that, other, other good stuff. So this resolution does just call for a cancellation of the second meeting. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crom?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine, considering approval of the minutes for the meetings held on September ninth and twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and October ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes for the meetings held on September ninth, twenty-fifth, and October ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second?
Uh, and.
I can't hear you. It's October fourteenth. Yeah, I was just looking at that.
October fourteenth, you're right.
Okay.
My bad, that's what it's, and I'm just reading, even though I did read the minutes. And I have to say, reading the minutes now is so much easier than when we're still working off of the transcribe.
Oh, yes. That's for sure. That is for sure.
Uh, those were, those were really.
Those were tough.
Those were tough. They took a long time to get to us, and they were also really tough to read through and all. And I hated reading through them, because every time I said, um, it came up in there, so.
Oh.
Now AI can transcribe meetings quite remarkably.
Pretty good, yeah, they're pretty good.
Quite remarkably.
Yeah, and that's about where we were, where we were back then, where it was, we would have these meetings, and a lot of times they were virtual meetings. And then it was verbatim, the minutes.
Okay, interesting, yeah.
Not a good thing.
Not a good, nobody wants verbatim minutes.
No. And it took a long time to read and, and you sit there saying, did I really say that? And, uh, but I guess I did.
Ralph is the only one sitting here that would appreciate how bad verbatim transcripts can be. If you've ever done litigation.
Correct.
Go, I thought English was my main language. Clearly, it isn't.
Although we have videotape now, so.
Yes.
Which is a videotape.
Right. All right. Any other questions or comments on the minutes?
Do you want this back?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
I thought we did this.
Oh, you're right, I forgot.
As an ensemble.
No, my, my bad. Well, we'll, we'll continue this time.
I want to go back to the ensemble.
All right, fine. All right, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. An administrator's report.
Okay, I do have a couple of items just want to mention. One is, you know, we had a very busy October with community events, so thanks to parks and recreation and all the other departments that helped out on, great job. I thought the pumpkin patch and trunk and treat and pumpkin smash and all the other things we had going on really was all well attended by the residents. I know the board really made all of those functions. And I thought it was really nice gatherings, and it's so nice to see people out and about and talking in the park and just starting their days or the, extending their days with the village of Rybrook, all together with their neighbors. December fifth is Winterfest, so, you know, we have, November's a, you know, we have a little bit of a lull on some events in November, and then December fifth is a big one. Winterfest, it takes a lot of work, but, you know, we're hoping for good weather this year. Everyone, let's hope. And Winterfest is always a, a fun event for everyone. Leaf program is still heavy underway. We're, looks like, looking at the charts, remember, we do track our leaves, we do track how much we collect. We track the next pickup, how many times you've been on, we've been on each street, as well as an estimate of when we'll be returning. So just a reminder to the residents, if you want to see where you, how many times your street's been picked up or about when they'd be back, you know, that's all online on our website. Let's see, so that program's, you know, it's still definitely a lot of, we're peeking still into the leaf season. Con Ed Municipal Consortium has, that, that's reaching an end, we hope. Right now, there's been a settlement established by the Public Service Commission staff, as well as the Con Edison and other agencies. And that includes a settlement that would, is recommended to the full Public Service Commission that would have to act on it. And that would be reducing the original total bill impact from thirteen percent to two point eight. And on the, that's on the electric and on gas, it would be going from nine, the originally proposed nineteen percent to two percent on the gas side. So that's your total bill impact. So the municipal consortium has agreed not to oppose the settlement. That does not mean they signed on to it, because the rates are still higher than what they were proposing. But it did, we're not going to oppose it. We, I say we, because we're one of forty communities out of forty-one that have Con Ed in the county that are, have been working on this issue as a party to that rate case. There's two other items that are very significant to Westchester, and this was an important reason why it's not being opposed, is these were items asked by the Westpol, Westchester Municipal Consortium. One is that there's a full analysis and meeting with all the municipalities annually on capital projects to make sure that the funds raised in Westchester stay in Westchester and don't get diverted to New York City. And that there's enough storm hardening and other types of projects that are included. And secondly, there's, the Con Ed is required to do a study of the overhead wires, uh, system, overhead systems and the underground systems, because there's, we want to make sure, again, that there's not a disproportionate amount of system costs that are going to places like New York City at Westchester's expense. So these are issues that were very important to the consortium. So as a result of the lower rates, and as a result of those two other items and some other things, the consortium is not, has decided not to oppose the settlement. That doesn't mean the settlement's done. It's, now there's hearing processes, and people are writing, have to write comments on the settlement. And then there's a, the pub, ultimately, the Public Service Commission has to vote on it. So that's kind of where that stands. So we're hopeful that that's been a positive direction, and I think it's been a really great experience for all the participating municipalities. Other piece of news in utility related, we've been notified by Sustainable Westchester that the Community Toys Aggregation Program, otherwise known as Westchester Power, which establishes the default supply side of the, of the system at a fixed rate. They've decided that in working with the state and the Public Service Commission, they were unable to meet all the requirements, particularly on public outreach requirements and other things. And they decided they're going to end the Westchester Power program. So that means all residents will be defaulted back to the regular, not green energy, but just a regular Con Ed variable rate system like it was prior to Westchester Power. So that system's not, that new contract won't be renewed, and, and it's just going to be ending this year. But all residents will get a notification about that as in coming days, weeks, or month. That's all.
All right. Any other questions, comments, or thoughts?
My only comment is that it was our, Chris Bradbury and his staff, Greg, who put together this coalition to help with the savings for all of Westchester, and you should be commended on that. So thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Well, it definitely was a lot of time, but.
Leadership from Chris and from WMOA, being able to push out the information. We appreciate all forty municipalities who signed on to this. It really, and I, and I said this on the meeting with the municipalities itself and, and through an email, it really shows the power that we as the municipalities have when we join together to try and create positive results for the residents in, in Westchester County.
I'd just say, the, you know, definitely took a lot of time on this one, but it was time well spent with the outcome. But I just want to thank the board for giving me the, you know, encouragement and the, saying that this is important for the county, not just Rybrook, but the county too. Let's, let's work together to see what we can get done. So thank you for that support.
Right, it was really important. I know that initially, we didn't know how many were going to join on, and we gave you a certain amounts of funding, and then it ended up being really a great deal.
Yeah, it was like twenty-five hundred each for, yeah, for the whole thing.
Next to nothing, when you, when you really think about it.
The benefit that you have, yeah, that you got.
And it was a lot of time, and I understand that, and the municipalities had to help with data, et cetera. But it's a great outcome for our residents and for all of the residents of Westchester.
Yeah, and we should really also thank Joel Dikter, who.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Who really did a fit.
Took on more than I think you expected in terms of the number of people he had to work with. And the, this case was one of the hardest cases ever, be given, given the number of parties involved.
Right, and, and like Chris said, you know, that information that we're going to be gaining from this
Yeah.
is really valuable, and, and, and we appreciate, you know, we, we understand where Con Ed is coming from. We appreciate them working with us and really listening to what we had to say, and the PSC as well.
But like you said, going forward, both short term and long term, we want to make sure the funds raised in Westchester stays here. It's being paid by the customers here in Westchester, should be investing back in the system in Westchester.
Absolutely.
Here, here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, the next meetings of the, the Board of Trustees will be November twenty-fifth and December ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. So November twenty-fifth is right before Thanksgiving.
Yes, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.